Excellent, so we've got this being recorded. I'm gonna hide my face. So that we can talk about the, talk about all the materials. So, welcome again, everybody. Hopefully, all of you have been studying all the materials that we've previously gone over. So just to review with you, number one, again, if you go to AmericanCheeseSociety.org, that's their website, a bulk of the information on the exam comes straight from the website. We reviewed this on our last training, and I really prompted everybody to make sure that you go to their website, look under the Resources tab, and under the Resources tab, and I've already, and I've emailed all the links to you as well from these, to make sure that you could download it to your computer and save it to your computer. All these materials, you do have the ability to save them and review them. That's gonna be the glossary, the best practices for cheesemaking. Those two are gonna be real big, so make sure you study those and create flashcards with your definitions and your glossary, and that's gonna give you a big help. And also in the last training, we reviewed how to think about what are gonna be questions. And remember that anything on the ACS CCP exam is going to deal with anything that affects us all. And by affecting us all, I mean, from us cheesemongers, which most of us are, from cheesemongers to distributors, to retailers, to cheesemakers even, to brokers, so anything, and even farmers, dairy farmers. So whatever really affects the entire core of the cheese business, that's what they're gonna focus on more with the questions. So I'm gonna lead you. It's not my job to give you the answers to the questions, or even give you the specific questions. It's my job as an authorized educator to lead you to the areas where you're gonna find more of the answers and more of the questions that you're gonna be more likely asked. So it's my job to guide you there, but you have to read and study. So hopefully you all are taking some time out of your week, every single week, to do some reading. Before I get started here, let me make sure I get everybody admitted. Alrighty, now people are joining in. Before we get started on the level 800, which I emailed out today, I wanna talk about the three books that I sent out in the email that I suggested for everyone to get. The big three that ACS suggests to read or to use as a reference guide in studying are the Oxford Companion to Cheese. This is a great book. We're gonna talk through this today, and I'm gonna, I'm going to highlight the protected cheeses that you should study more than other cheeses. I got positive feedback last year that me just helping narrow down the list was very helpful. So I'm gonna do that today, so we're gonna reference this book. Also, I'm going to reference American Farmstead Cheese. This is another book that the ACS recommends for reading for this exam. I find it really helpful. It's a little bit older, but there's some great information. This is a little bit more scientific. And then, we're gonna talk a little bit also about mastering cheese. This is the third book that the ACS really recommends everybody get as a resource. And I find that this is a good resource for definitions. So this is like overall definitions, scientific and European cheeses. So that's how I've kinda broken those up. So let's just talk about that for a minute. Beautiful. So if you have your Oxford Companion to Cheese, I would ask that you open up into your glossary area after the introduction. You're going to see topical outlines of entries. Then you're going to flip the page, you're gonna see biographies, cheese families and classifications, cheesemaking process and technology, and then we're gonna get to our favorite one, cheeses. Because this is the area where you need to really focus on, you know, it is the American Cheese Society, but they do ask questions about some of the great old world protected cheeses. And hopefully by now in your studies, you know what a protected cheese is. Protected designation of origin, PDO. So if you're unfamiliar with PDOs, you, this is a catch-up time. I would absolutely ask that you go ahead and start learning about that, but all of you should know that there are protected cheeses out there. So I'm just gonna go through, and I'm going to name out of all this, see what you see here in this, the cheeses of these two pages, there's probably a couple hundred cheeses here. I'm gonna narrow this down and really guide you to focus on, if you focus on the cheeses I say now, you're gonna do much better on the test. You don't have to focus on 5,000 cheeses. These are just your Europeans to focus on. Alrighty, so going through this list, again, in our cheese, our Oxford Companion to Cheese, you need to know what Abbe de Tamey is. I would know what Abondance is. Abondance is definitely gonna be on your test. Moving on down, Appenzeller. I would know what Appenzeller is. Asiago. A lot of us know about the young Asiago, but you need to know about the protected Asiago as well. And then under Asiago here on this page, Azietal. That is a great, that's coming out of Spain, Portugal region. The next cheese to know, Banon. Banon, beautiful little French cheese. Then, a very important cheese to know, Beaufort. B-E-A-U-F-O-R-T, Beaufort. That is absolutely gonna be on your test. I would know Burgos. I would know Blut Belvone, beautiful blue cheese out of France. Blut des Casius. That one, I'm recalling a lot of this that I know was on my exam a few years ago, but I'm gonna throw my disclaimer out there. They change anywhere from 15 to 30 questions a year on the exam. But they're gonna ask probably a lot about these cheeses, so don't worry. Alright, so after Blut des Casius, I would focus on Brit. Bri Demo. I would know Bri Demo. Briat Savarand. Absolutely, you need to know Briat Savarand. Not only know the cheese Briat Savarand, but I would look up who he was. He was an important feature in the cheese world. So Briat Savarand. Brendemore. Beautiful little sheep milk cheese. Of course, know what Baratta is. And then Calabrese. Excuse me, that's on Cabralis. Know what Cabralis is. Beautiful blue cheese out of Spain, and as you may can tell, all cheeses are beautiful in my eyes. I would know Cacciavallone, Forte Calo. I would know Carefully. Camembert de Normandy. And then Cantal. And that's the first row, so Cantal. That's your first column right there, so that saves you a little bit of looking over, you know, you can, you know, I'm not saying don't know all these cheeses, but focus more closely on the cheeses I'm telling you about. Alrighty, then Cashel Blue. Out of Ireland. Castle Mango, great cheese. Chabichu, D, Pietu. I would know that one. Charousse. Alrighty, cheddar. Now, this just has cheddar, that's very generic. One thing to know about cheddar in England, you need to know, make a note of this, everybody. The three counties where cheddar can come from. You need to know the counties where cheddar can come from. You're probably gonna get asked a question that the A, B, C, D answers they list for you are all kind of, are three counties each, but you need to be able to pick out which ones you can make cheddar in. Alrighty, Cheshire. Classic Blue Log. Contay. Contay is a big one. Now with Contay, I would specifically want to, want you to remember the ages of Contay and their corresponding color bands. That means every wheel of Contay, around the wheel, when it, when it, when it passes the test, they get different color bands. The printing along the outside is different color, whether it's brown, green, red. Those denote different ages. Be able to know the color and the age. Alrighty, Cougar Gold. That is, not all these cheeses are European. Cougar Gold is a cheddar cheese made in a can that comes out of Seattle, out of Washington State University. That is, besides being a pretty cool cheddar, they like to ask, they're gonna throw in some American cheeses as well. Of course, it's the American Cheese Society. Alrighty. Columnières, know that. Croatan de Chavignard. I would know Edam. Absolutely Emmentaler. And Epoisse. Know Epoisse. Pio Rezardo. I would know Fantina Baldeosta. Great cheese to know. And then continuing on down to Form d'Ambe. Gaperon. And Garrocha. That's from the second column. So we're narrowing it down. I think this is pretty cool. Now to the third column on this page of cheeses to know. I would know our glausters. And look up the difference between a single and a double gloucester. That would be important to know. Grana Padano. I would want to know, if I were taking this test, I would wanna study, what is the difference between grana padana and Parmesan Reggiano? We see them in the United States, they're oftentimes merchandised together. They look very similar. What are the differences? I would absolutely wanna be able to pick that out. Gruyere. Oh, I would know everything about Gruyere. Absolutely, that's a big dog, and you will be asked a question about that. Halumi. I would know Halumi is in the sense of what are the ingredients? I think the ingredients are really important with Halumi, especially with being protected. And, how is it actually made? The fact that it is cooked in brine, cooked in its brine or whey solution is going to be very helpful for you to know. So look that up. Humboldt Fog. So that's a great American cheese. So hopefully you all are familiar with Cypress Grove. If not, write down Cypress Grove and look them up. But Humboldt Fog, one thing to remember about them is, you know who our cheesemaker is? Who invented Humboldt Fog? You know, so Mary Keane, when she was coming up with Humboldt Fog, there's a whole story about why did she put the vegetable ash in the center of the cheese? And to go into that just a little bit, because that may not be written down in a lot of organized places, but Mary Keane says that she was traveling to France and was learning how to make cheese and seeing different producers and saw how Morbié was being made. And of course, Morbié, also know that cheese, but Morbié, of course, classic washed rind French cheese, raw cow's milk, that's made from morning milk and evening milk, made in halves, basically, where there's a lot, where there's vegetable ash. And the morning milk and evening milk cheeses are put together and aged, so that when you cut into the cheese, you see a line of vegetable ash. So Mary Keane says that she had a dream, actually, so that when she was traveling back from France to California, she had a dream on the way back about how beautiful a line of vegetable ash would look in the center of a beautiful thick white cakey goat milk cheese. So she was already dreaming of Humboldt Fog, thinking of making it a little bit taller like a cake, and thought that the line of vegetable ash could resemble the fog rolling in off the bay to really give you a true visual sense of place for that cheese. So that is something, wink, I would wanna remember about that story. Alright, but anything that I know that may be harder to find in books, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you. Other areas, again, I'm going to direct you to look up for studying purposes. Alright, Itie Zabal, listed under Humboldt Fog on this page is Queso Itie Zabal. Smoked sheep milk cheese from Spain. Alrighty. Jack, I would know Jack as a cheese, because Jack is pretty much an American original. So throwing out the term "American original", if you're reading about cheeses in any of these books or the guides or on the website, and it's listed as an American original, make special note of that. Again, the American Cheese Society, we are Americans, we're coming up with new, more exciting cheeses nowadays. And that's gonna be important for the American Cheese Society to question you about, because again, the whole point of this test is to help us all speak with the same voice. So I would know that. Jack. Let's see, Casari. Let's see, Lancashire. See, we skipped a bunch there. Then, Langra, under Lancashire, but Langra, L-A-N-G-E-S. Excuse me, L-A-N-G-R-E-S, Langra. Beautiful little cheese from France that has a dimple on the top of it. So special note for everybody studying with me today. Langra, know that there's a dimple in the top of this cheese. What do we pour into this cheese? There's something poured into the dimple of Langra and enjoyed. It is French, it's champagne. So look that up. I remember a question being about what traditionally is poured into the dimple of Langra. That is, I know it's a weird question, but that's the style they'll do in any of these that I'm directing you to. Learn what's special about them, and learn if there's something specific with their pairings item that pairs with it from that country. Specifically, Langra and champagne, those are paired perfectly together, and it's very traditional. So that's my one example to give you of anything you see like that while studying these cheeses. Alrighty, then under Langra, ooh, one of my favorites, La Saran. That is so good, a nice creamy Spanish cheese. Limburger. Limburger, I recall more so they're gonna ask about producers, because there's not a lot of producers of Limburger anymore. So I would wanna know who makes Limburger? Who makes it in the US? And where can you get it outside the US? That's key for that cheese. Then of course, Libero. Oh, Libero, it's been a long time, my friend. Sorry, I get a little geeky when I talk about these cheeses. It's been a minute since I've had them all. It's so nice. Alright, now on the next page, I'm continuing on, and again, just calling out cheeses to really focus on studying. Alrighty, Mahone. Absolutely know about Mahone. That is a cow's milk cheese from Spain. I would know what island Mahone is from, because that is from an island in Spain, and one of the few cow milk cheeses you're gonna get there. But then if you're staying in Spain, of course, you need to know about Manchego. Absolutely know about Manchego. We know that's a protected cheese, it has a DO status. That being said, know what country DO works with. What countries are you gonna find AOC cheeses? What country are you going to find DOP cheeses? Know the countries in their, in their acronyms. But Manchego, I recall of course, asked, getting asked about Manchega sheep. This is one so specific as a, what breed of sheep goes into making Manchego. Manchega. Know that. Know where it's from. This is very specific as far as being from La Mancha. And I recall questions being asked about how long must Manchego be aged to be, to earn its DO status? So know the age of the cheese. I wanna say off the top of my head, it's, I think it's, I think it's three to four months, but let's look that one up. But I remember that being asked. Alrighty. Continuing on, Morales. I would know that cheese. Maytag Blue. Yeah, that's a great American cheese. Know who makes it, and know that, yeah, it does come from the Maytag Washing Machine Company. That's something to know. Know that tie-in. Anytime you have American cheesemakers, there's always gonna be a tie-in to something, right? Then of course, Memolet. I would absolutely know Memolet. You're gonna get a question about that for sure, because it's one of the most world famous cheeses for what? Cheese mites, right? So we need to know that there's cheese mites on Memolet. Know the ages of Memolet. And then also, side note, know about cheese mites. Make a note to look up cheese mites. Know what family of insect cheese mites are in. I'm gonna say that one more time. Know what family of insect that cheese mites are in, and that mites and Memolet go together. Alrighty. Let's see, Montagio. I would know that. Montdor. Absolutely know Montdor. This cheese is referred to as Vacherin Montdor. And us in the cheese world, quite honestly, refer to it one of the best cheeses in the world. What to know about Vacherin Montdor is what season, what, it's made from what month to what month? You won't get asked that question. So Vacherin Montdor is made from when to when. So I'm gonna leave you guys to look that up, but that's gonna be your question. Monteanebro. I would know that. Morbié, I already mentioned that. Absolutely know Morbié. And here, mozzarella. No mozzarella in the sense of pasta filata. You will get asked which cheeses are made in the pasta filata style. So that is something important. So in your notes right now, write down pasta filata. Of course, we're talking about stretched curd. That's what pasta filata means. And if you get asked about, like, mozzarella's gonna be, that would be a general question, because it's really a very famous cheese, but if they're to ask something, how is it made? And then of course, mozzarella de bufala, we would wanna know that really the first buffalo, the first mozzarella's made were from buffalo milk. So I would know mozzarella de bufala. And Moonster. Now, I would know Monster in not the American version of slicing monster, but the beautiful washed rind, small round version of Monster. Then we're gonna keep going. Nof Chatel. I would know that one. Also Inrati. Piernay Also Inrati, beautiful sheep milk cheese out of the French Pyrenees. I would love to know that one. And then of course, oh my goodness, Parmesan Reggiano. If you're a cheesemonger or cheese buyer on here, you wanna know everything about Parmesan Reggiano, know that it is a cooked curd cheese. I would know that the curds have to be cut very small to make Parmesan Reggiano, and that it is in the grana family. Those are major things to know. And again, they may pit them against each other. What's the difference between Parmesan Reggiano and grana padana? Know those. And as we're continuing on. Pecorino's, we need to know. I recall more about Pecorino Sardo. Being asked, and of course, Pecorino Romano. Absolutely know about Pecorino Romano. And Pecorino, going to the next column now. Pecorino Tascano. Piave. Now then, Pleasant Ridge Reserve. So Pleasant Ridge Reserve, here's an example, I'm gonna take a tiny timeout as we talk, go into a little bit about American cheeses. So Pleasant Ridge Reserve, I believe, has won Best of Show at the ACS three times. This is where I wanna direct you all again to go to, there is a page on the ACS website that lists former winners. Know what American cheeses have won Best of Shows. That is really important, especially one like Pleasant Ridge Reserve that has won thrice. You know, that's, that's likely to get asked. On the same note, Rogue River Blue, maybe on this list, I haven't gotten to it yet, but something like Rogue River Blue, that has not only won at the ACS, but also won at the World Cheese Awards. You know, if it took home Best in Show, I would wanna say that was 2019. That's a prime question to ask, but hopefully you see where I'm coming from too. It's like, that's a big dog in the American cheese world, like, big dog, like, big, not gross dog. But it's a big player in the United States. So that one, we all need to know about. That shouldn't, Rogue River Blue shouldn't be a secret to any of us. So if you're going ahead and making your list, be sure to write that down too. You will get asked one, if not two, questions about Rogue River Blue. And especially with that one, who makes it? As well as, again, it is available from when to when. I believe as we're talking about the equinoxes, when we're talking about Rogue River Blue, and as well as, what are the leaves soaked in that go into making Rogue River Blue? So know about that. Pleasant Ridge Reserve, just to go specific with that one, of course, that it's a Farmstead cheese, won several awards, and that really, it was, it was, it was inspired by Alpine-style cheeses such as Abondance and Gruyere. That's what I would wanna remember about Pleasant Ridge Reserve. Alright, continuing on, Pont Lavec. Nice, pretty cheese. Let's see, continuing on. Rocklet. I would know a lot about Rocklet. There is Swiss version, there's French Rocklet. But one major thing to remember about Rocklet is actually the meaning of its name. So Rocklet, when you hear that cheese, it means to scrape. And know that it is believed that Rocklet came about as shepherds a long time ago would melt the cheese next to the fire, whether they melted it on a rock and had to scrape it, or if the cheese itself was just melted close to the fire, but either way, it scraped traditionally on potatoes. That is something, and that's what I mean by a classic pairing. I know, I throw that out there sometimes, and people are like, well, pairings can be kinda in a nebulous world, but Rocklet and potatoes are like peas and carrots. It's like Stilton and port. By the way, I would write that down, Stilton and port. That's what I mean by very traditional pairings. Alrighty, continuing on, Rebleschon, absolutely no Rebleschon. Red Hawk. So that goes into another great American cheesemaker. So just a side note, as we continue on, besides learning these European cheeses, you're gonna need to know these great American cheesemakers. So who started Cowgirl Primery? I would know Cowgirl Primery. Where is it located? I would know about Peg and Sue, who started Cowgirl, and I would know about the cheeses that they sell. Absolutely, Red Hawk, of course, being the washed rind version of their cheeses. Red Lester, know about that. Now, ricotta underneath here, ricotta isn't necessarily protected cheese, but I would know how ricotta is made. That's what you would wanna know about ricotta. Not necessarily what you would put it in, but it's a special way of making cheese, especially because we're talking about the whey, quite often, that really just boiled the way to get ricotta. So look that up, get your definition of ricotta, and know that one, but it's more about the making style to that. Alrighty. Robiola. The term robiola generally refers to mixed milk cheeses. So I would know that about robiola. I don't, I don't recall so much specific robiola questions versus what does robiola mean? So I would focus more so on that in your study time. And here we have it, Rogue River Blue. I mentioned that already, went off on a little tangent about it. Absolutely know that 100% Rogue River Blue is on your test. I'm looking at the camera, so I'm trying to make eye contact with it. Rogue River Blue. Know it, love it, live it. It's on your test. Also, it's just beautiful cheese. And they're not gonna ask prices. You know, this isn't information where they're gonna like, ask about that. They wanna know how it's made, milk type. So it's cow's milk, it's blue cheese. And again, what makes that cheese special? What makes Rogue River Blue cheese special is that it's made in between the summer, excuse me, the spring and winter equinox, I believe. Double check my facts on that, but the fact that it's soaked in, it's grape leaves soaked in a pear brandy. I would know that. That's what's gonna give it its flavor, and that's what makes it special. Alrighty, I would know Roncall. Wrong call, Queso Roncall, very good cheese from Spain. Alright, Rogue Four. I'm gonna pause here. Rogue Four, super duper important. Wink, wink, nudge, nudge. I would know Rogue Four, inside and out. I would know that it was the very first protected cheese in the world. And that it's, I think it came about in 1925 as to be protected. But that's something to know about Rogue Four, and that's what they could ask you about it. It's like, Rogue Four, you know that it's gonna be a sheep milk cheese. Lebute sheep, you need to know the breed of sheep for Rogue Four, and you need to know that it was the first protected cheese. So that's what you can, that's what you can narrow down your focus for on that, but 100% Rogue Four. Alrighty, Saint Mor. Oh, beautiful little cheese. I would know that guy. Alrighty, Saint Mole, oh beautiful little cheese, I would know that guy. Uh Saint Nectaire, absolutely. Salers. Salers, absolutely. So if you don't have, if you're making notes, S A L E R S. I would know this cheese. This cheese is spoken a lot about in the book. Reinventing the Wheel. So that reinventing the wheel isn't necessarily a recommended reading for CCP. I recommend anybody that loves cheese, read that book. But Salers is, is really known as kinda like a French cheddar style in a way, but it's an old world cheese uh where. Where cultures are really important to it. So I'd read up about Salers, probably you could ask about that. It's hard, but it's hard to have tasted that in the United States. They don't sell it everywhere. It's, it's a more rare cheese, actually. Alrighty, then uh Sau Jorge. I would know that cheese. Sau Jorge specifically, where does it come from? It's also gonna come from an island. So I would know Sau Jorge, that's S A O, second word, J O R G E. Know that. Springs, we want to know. Salsa share. Perfect. And one thing to look at when you're talking about the protected version. So salsa shares specifically, just from, I've had a lot of experience uh eating and selling it, absolutely love it, smash rind, uh goat milk cheese uh from the Loire Valley. But the protected version is raw. And the pasteurized version is not protected. So just know that, know that it's a cheese under 60 days old. So to really get the protected version of this, you have to go to France. You can sell salsa share here, but it's not going to be the true protected version because it's pasteurized. So look up that. Uh Sarah de Estrella. I would know that cheese as well. Perfect. Now the third column in this book. So again, hopefully you're following with me and making highlights. Uh and I know it's still a lot of cheese to study, but just know I'm cutting this list. Hopefully by over half. So half these cheeses, you won't have to worry about as much. But again, you're still accountable for all of them, but I don't think you're gonna get asked about every one of them. Don't worry. Alright, the last row. Stitzleton. I would know Stitzleton. I would know Stilton. And I would know Stinking Bishop. Three great English cheeses right there alphabetically. Uh Stilton. Again, I would wanna know with its protection. Is this a raw milk? Is this a pasteurized milk? This may be one of the few pasteurized notes that get a protection. Wink, I would look that up. Uh but Stilton, also, anytime you're dealing with English cheeses, uh they're really gonna wanna know the counties, just like cheddar, and I'm gonna repeat, cheddar. Know the counties that cheddar can be made in. That's important. Stilton, the same way. Stinking Bishop, okay, we got that. Talegio, oh my good friend Talegio. D O P, beautiful cheese, of course, washed rind cheese out of Italy. One thing to know about Talegio, the, the question that you're gonna get asked more than likely. Is going to be the milk type, and not just that it's cow, but that it's made from, well, quote unquote, tired milk. T I R E D, tired milk, exhausted milk, which means that it's good, that these cows are milk towards the end of the milking season. So I would look up the term tired milk and know about that, and to tie it into Talegio. Beautiful. Then we're going to. Torta del Caesar. I would know that one. Uh keep, continuing on down. I would know Valdeon. Queso Valdeon. I would know Valence. Woo, Valence, this is a good one, because it also has a story. Valence is a cousin to Salsa Share from a similar region, same region in France. Uh where it is a uh young uh goat milk cheese from the Loire Valley. But this one is made in a pyramid shape with the top of the pyramid cut off. Alright, so Valence, and the legend goes that uh it was Napoleon. Who requested uh that, that Valence be so, be made with no top, because the pyramid reminded him too much of his defeat in Egypt. And it's said that he was served Valence one time, and he pulled his scabbard out of, or sword out of a scabbard, and just sliced the top of the, the cheese off. Uh did that really happen? I don't really know, but that's the story that goes along with it, and that's something that could be tied in with the question of Valence. So again, it's something, whether it's a classic pairing, how it's made, but what makes it special, and that's the special story about Valence. Continuing on. Alright, whether or not you like this or not. You need to know about Velveeta. You need to know about Kraft. You need to know like, what is Velveeta? That it's a processed cheese food, cuz that's something important to us in the cheese industry, right? Like, we, we wanna focus on selling real cheese and good cheese. But to do that, we also have to know the difference between real cheese and not real cheese. And we all know that Velveeta is not real cheese, but what is it? So I would look that up, and even when it came about. Velveeta and even Kraft Singles. Kraft Singles isn't listed on here, but I would know who Kraft was as a person. And at what timeframe he, he, he was operating. So when did all these cheeses come about? When did the process uh come about of making uh processed cheese? Because I think it's more important to know the timeframe, when that was. So, to make that note, especially about Velveeta and Kraft. Alrighty. Ooh, okay, Winsley Dale. Another little popular English cheese. And then, of course, Winamere. Winamere. Uh that Winamere, of course, is gonna be made by Jasper Hill Farms. And I'm gonna tell you, I would absolutely know about Jasper Hill. Jasper Hill is huge in the American cheese world. They make amazing cheeses. They age amazing cheeses for cheesemakers. Uh so Jasper Hill sellers, or the sellers at Jasper Hill. I would look them up, know about them. I would know who Andy and Mateo Keller are. Um I would wanna know that they worked with Cabot uh to create Cabot cloth-bound cheddar. Um but cuz what they're doing uh in Vermont is amazing. Um side note, again, you should know who they are by now, if you're in the American cheese world, but look them up, look up about their, their sellers, you could get asked about that. Uh Winamere, and of course, what's not on here that I didn't see, because this book is probably a little older, but Harbison. I would write down Harbison, and I would know about it. The reason I'm telling you to write down Harbison, because it's won Best of Show before. I would know that, know that Harbison, of course, is a pasteurized cow's milk cheese, soft ripened, and that has spruce. Wrapped around uh the rind, the same as Winamere. That's what makes that cheese special. That's what you need to know. And then, of course, to throw in another little curveball, does Jasper Hill make the cheese, or do they age it for another cheesemaker? That's something else to know. Um then the last cheese here, uh Zamorano is what I would wanna focus on. So I would say, actually, like going through this list in this book, this helps narrow it down. This cuts two thirds of study out of it for you. So if I find, I found that very helpful when this was uh, we were studying like this, and hopefully you find it uh helpful too. Now I'm gonna keep going before you close your books, because to talk about another, some more American uh cheesemakers, and also here, it's got cheese shops listed. So let's vote, let's, let's know our American cheesemakers. These are important cheesemakers to study and know. Are, I'm going through my mind in uh, in uh, starting at the East Coast, looking in Vermont, Springbrook Farm. I would know Springbrook Farm and their cheeses. Terrante's is definitely a cheese to know. Um because also, cuz Jeremy uh, who is, runs that uh cheesemaking facility, he was president of the ACS last year. So I always feel like, if they're tied in with ACS pretty heavy, there's probably a good chance you get asked a question about them. I know that sounds weird, but that's the thing about it. Uh Jasper Hill, of course, we mentioned is a big one. Uh you need to know about Vermont Creamery. Uh I would know about Allison Hooper, uh who started uh Vermont Creamery. She's major there. Uh and to kinda flip it onto the west side of that, that's Allison Hooper is in the same boat as Mary Keane with Cypress Grove. Uh let's uh. Look up Laura Chanel. You need to know those American cheesemakers. So the, the big American cheesemakers that are out there, you're absolutely gonna get asked questions about. And I find some of those are really some of the bigger producers out there, uh and I'll keep mentioning them as we go along through our trainings. Now, as far as cheese shops, you're gonna get asked about some cheese shops. I know that sounds crazy, but uh more so cheese shops in America. Like there, you're not gonna get asked about every cheese shop across the world. That, that's a bit much. But for the American Cheese Society, American cheese shops are important. So I'm gonna go through here and just kinda point out ones to know, and then mention if there's anything else. So of course, um Bedford Cheese Shop, I would know them. I would know Beechers Handmade Cheese. I would know De Bruno Brothers. You see where I'm going with this? The big, the, the big guys, right? The Bruno Brothers, amazing, out of Philadelphia. You, you haven't got a chance to visit the Bruno Brothers, they're great. Fairfield and Grimace Cheese Company. Alrighty. I would know about. I'll continue with the list, sorry with the silence. Murray's Cheese in New York City. I would know about Neil's Yard Cheeses. I would know about Sax will be cheesemongers. And then, what's not on this list, which I think would be perfect for you? Antonelli's. I would know about Antonelli's Cheese Shop. Oh, the Antonellis are beautiful people. They run a great shop down in Texas. Uh but they also, if you've watched television in the last year, you would also know that they uh, they're on the American Express uh commercial. For small, I think it's American Express, or is it Capital One? Anyway, a credit card uh commercial. And I think that's big, like they're, they're getting nationally known because of that. And I think that's a big shot in the arm for us in the cheese world, for them to be so popular uh because of that. I don't know if I'll ask a question about it, but Antonelli's absolutely amazing. Beautiful. Um that covers a lot, what you need to study from. The Oxford Companion to Cheese. So this covers that. Now I'm gonna go through the other books. To help you narrow down what I think's important from here. And again, if you have any other questions, just hit the chat. I'm thinking we're rolling fine. I haven't heard anything, so let's just keep rocking. Now, a little bit about the American farmstead cheese. Besides that, I need to mention, you need to know who wrote what. Paul Kinsit, hopefully you can see my screen well. He's written a few books in the cheese world. This one, uh he's written uh Cultures of Cheese. Anything, he's, I've listened to him speak, super smart, but Paul Kinsit is an author that you may get asked about. So besides knowing the cheeses, besides knowing cheese shops, you're gonna get asked about authors of cheese books as well. So I would know that Paul Kinsit, major author, know what he wrote. That happens to be, that's, that's Mateo Keller from Jasper Hill on the cover there. That's young Mateo, look at him. Uh but what to know out of this book? I found it very helpful. If I studied on this book, page 79. The eight basic steps of cheesemaking. They put it down really well here. So I think that section is very important, as well as. Ensuring safety. So going on page 139, ensuring safety and quality. One, hazard analysis, critical control point, and the cheesemaking process. I'm gonna go ahead and tell you, I mentioned that in our first training. Hazard analysis, critical control point. Hassle, know it. You need to, like, you're gonna get asked at least five questions about hassle, at least. Uh but that's hu, that's huge in the cheese world, because that goes into food safety and making sure that in the production method, there are food safety procedures. Uh this is mentioned in the Cheesemaking Hub booklet on the website, which I've instructed you to read through. Uh but it's also listed out in here, and I feel like reading it in two different ways, because two different authors sometimes have two different voices. And sometimes one voice, they speak better to you, or you may understand better from another author. So that's why I really, I really think that the way he put it, it's, it's kinda dry, but it's listed out really well in here. And those are the two big ones, even though that um. I think uh everything in here is important, but those two sections I find are the most important, uh even going back to like on page 80. Again, in the American cheese book, you know, setting the milk, know about that, renic coagulation. It seems easy. But this is what you're gonna wanna know. It lays it out really well in here. Those are the two sections here, and it's also just a beautiful reference book for cheesemaking. Third book. Is going to be. Mastering Cheese. So know who wrote this one, Max McCallum and David Gibbons. Max McCallman uh had a big hand in uh working on the original test, I believe. So I think he probably came up with a lot of the original questions, which are probably still sticking around, which is why this book is really helpful. But you see, I've got all my books earmarked, so to speak. And uh things that I found really helpful while reading this book is really, I like to skim. Number one, there's so much reading, so much studying. I feel like one of the best ways to get to it is skimming through, but you've gotta be an experienced reader to skim through and pick out the important parts of this book. So when I'm looking at it, what I've marked, I've started on page 16, on page 16 of Mastering Cheese. Criteria for artisanal cheeses. Like it talks about what is artisanal cheese. I'd read that. Uh and then, of course, it gives a good definition of farmstead. And I'm gonna tell you, you will get asked about the definition of a farmstead cheese. If we were in a live Percy class, I'd ask, and I know most of you know, but of course, farmstead cheese are cheeses that are made uh on the farm where the milk is produced. That's the main thing to remember about that. And moving through, there's great things, like I've highlighted so many, so much stuff on uh, let's see, page 20. Like there, there, there's a saying at the bottom of the page, in page 20. Another advantage to cheese is that its nutrients are predigested by bacteria and enzymes during the cheese making and aging. This means the process for breaking down its proteins, fats, and sugars has already begun before our digestive system goes to work. That's sound, that's a weird statement, right? It's, I mean, it's pretty cool, but it's not like they're gonna ask a question specifically about it, but they could reference it and move along. So it's something that you would have to know the background to move forward with the question, if that makes sense. Other areas, I mean, I did find this, a lot of this book, I'm skipping through, I would highly suggest reading it. On page 54, page 54 of this book, Cheesemaking Developments Step by Step. I found that that was very helpful, cuz it talks about large format cheeses, commodity cheeses, blue cheeses, smoky, mixed milk cheeses, uh leaf wrapping. Uh so that, that was a good section. I felt like some things came in from there. Other than that, I have highly highlighted on page 86, on page 86. I would know all about this. I've got highlighted the bottom two paragraphs on page 86. All the way through page 87. I think that that was very helpful for me as far as uh reading through that. And then on page 88, of course, through this book, I found that there's a couple of questions that come from the side. The side writings, these little paragraphs that are off to the side. If you see those, like, that's just a good spot to pull out information for a question for the test. Alright, and that's what I would focus on, was really looking into these books. Alright, hopefully, that helped narrow you down a little bit. Again, that's my, that's my goal, to be your guide for narrowing down your study. Uh I'm gonna give one second. Any questions about the books? About AOC, or excuse me, the, you know, the PDO cheeses, or American cheesemakers? Any questions about that right now? If not, I'm going to now go through this guide with you that I have on the screen. Now we're gonna, I'm gonna go through this. Um and I'm going to point out and I'm gonna highlight with you. So I did email this to you, so hopefully you have this opened up. Uh or if you wanna refer to it later, but this is a great tool. Now, this was uh put together by my predecessor, uh Michael Landis, who is an amazing cheese educator. Um and he put a lot of this work together. It's in a little bit of a different outline than what you see on the ACS website. But what I find very useful about it, again, is that if you have a different learning style, I feel like this book could help you out a little. I feel like this book could help you out a little bit more than the website. Although, I want to state it again, what you see on the American Cheese website, any of that information, if it counteracts with any other information, use the website information. Sometimes, over the years, some materials get outdated or something happens. Use, if there's any confusion, if one text says one thing and the ACS website says another, use the ACS website definitions, okay? But here, I think it's just, this is just really helpful, more information, and it's written in a way that it really flows well for studying. So hopefully this will help you out, do all of it at you at once. And what we'll do is, I'm going to start today going through it, and then our next training, I'm gonna continue going through the book. So that'll be this training as well as the next, uh, that's going to occur. So I'm just gonna keep rolling up through it. Let me move this out of the way a little bit. Alright, we got an intro by Michael on there. Uh, this just breaks down the modules. So this is broken down by module, uh, that can help you study a little bit more. So Module eight oh one, raw materials for cheesemaking. So just going through here, I have my book open too, because I can, I've studied this book quite thoroughly. And did find it very helpful. Looking at here, what I've got pointed out, PMO. So if I were making notes, listening to me right now, I would write PMO, pasteurized milk ordinance. You will absolutely get asked about that. So absolutely make a note about that. Moving through, again, I find all this information helpful, but you could, you could skim through some of this. Some of it's gonna be great. Some of it's gonna be like, really down to the nitty gritty, where I feel like the exam is like not quite down to this nitty gritty. So you can scan that, you can skim it through a little bit. Let's see. Lactose, so I'm on now on page seven. Lactose, of course, I thought this whole paragraph was very helpful. So look up this about lactose and the general carbohydrate chemistry. That was very helpful. Because again, but I don't, I'm trying not to hammer it down too much. Lactose affects everybody in the cheese industry. So you're gonna get asked a question about that. If you're going through again, and if you're breezing through your studies and if you're skimming, stick, like, let the word pop out that you think affects everybody. Lactose affects everybody in the cheese world. In the dairy industry, lactose is a big deal. So you will get asked questions about. Alrighty. Milk and carbohydrates chemistry. I would absolutely know about this. Alrighty. Lactose crystallization, I don't recall so much about. So I'm gonna continue on now to page eight. And what I have here on page eight that is extremely important, triglycerides. So this section here, this little box, I can't highlight the box on, on here right now, but triglycerides, I would know about those. And milk in fat chemistry. Milk contains approximately three point four percent total fat. That sounds like something to remember, right? Milk fat has the most complex fatty acid composition of edible fats. Over four hundred individual fatty acids have been identified in milk fat. However, approximately fifteen to twenty fatty acids make up ninety percent of the milk fat. Some of the fatty acids found in very small amounts, but contribute to the new, unique desirable flavor of milk fat and butter. So that's what I would remember, like, there's over four hundred individual fatty acids, uh, identified in milk. But approximately fifteen to twenty of those make up ninety percent of the fat. That's good stuff to know. Alrighty. Moving on to page nine. Let's see here, milk fat physical properties, I've got highlighted in my study book. So that's what I studied, and I found it really helpful. So I would, I would, uh, mark this entire paragraph. And again, if you're taking notes, you don't have, just make sure you write page nine, milk fat physical properties. And again, it talks about, uh, triglycerides. And anytime you're going through, skimming and reading, uh, know that if you see a word several times, that's an indicator that it's gonna be on the test, especially if it's on the ACS website materials. If you see it several times, that, that increases the likelihood, you're gonna get asked that question. Now coming down at the bottom of this. Alrighty, lipases removes fatty acids. I would know this whole bottom right here. I would, I would know that. The backbone of the triglyceride, using the action of the lipase, causes undesirable rancid flavors in milk. Boom, that's gonna be a question on your test. What? What creates undesirable rancid flavors in milk? Lipase, lipase, L-I-P-A-S-E. Know it, love it, live it. You will get asked that. And also, that's just a good thing to know, if you're tasting cheese, but that is a huge thing on the test. And that is, and anytime you see these little boxes, and again, with, whether it's your books or any other materials, these little boxes here, uh, they're gonna have a very important statement in there. So that's what you need to remember too. Enzymes that degrade fat are called lipases, uh, and the process is called lipolysis. So know that, that's gonna be on your test. And here I remember, also, this was a good statement at the bottom. Page nine is just full of good information. Page nine, winner. Light induced, uh, degr- uh, degradation can happen fairly rapidly in milk and produces a characteristic of all flavor. The majority of this all flavor is caused by protein degradation. Storing milk in a, but this is important, this is on the test. Absolutely, I'm getting excited reading this now. But storing milk in opaque containers minimizes this process. So this could be asked in a couple of different ways. They could talk about, uh, light induced, uh, degradation. Like, what is it? And then they could ask a separate question, how do you prevent it? So here, storing milk in opaque containers minimizes this process. Milk fat can also be, uh, degraded, uh, or excuse me, degraded, uh, by a classical chemical oxidation mechanism. Uh, the attack on double bonds in the fatty acid by oxygen. Oxidation, uh, the unsaturated, um, what is that? Phospholipids, uh, in milk produces all flavors that are described by panty, fishy, or metallic. I would know that. That whole, so page nine of this, this is a win. Know everything on it, and you can get at least three questions out of there. Awesome. Moving on to page ten. Influence of heat treatments on milk fat. I like that. So you need to know, and we, I pointed this out the last training, so this is something I've already talked about, but something I want to reiterate. Now it's talking about the, the milk fat. But look at these, uh, temperatures they're talking about. So typical high temperature, short time. That is, that is a definition you need to know. High temperature, short time, HTST. You need to know all of these acronyms and what they stand for. The, in this sense, they could ask you a question, what does the acronym mean, or what it stands for? That's a fair question. Or it could just be in a question, and you have to know, to know about the question. So in a way, they could, they could just say HTST without really giving you a frame of reference as to what it is, that's why you would need to know. So hopefully that makes sense to everybody. Alright, continuing on here, page ten. Uh, I've got the term denatured. So if you see this term denatured, D-E-N-A-T-U-R-E-D. I would know that. So denatured is used when proteins unfold from their native chain or globule shape. Uh, denaturing proteins is beneficial in some instances, such as allowing easy access to the protein chains by enzymes for digestion, or for increasing the ability of the whey proteins to bind water and provide a desirable texture in yogurt production. So that's, you said they can ask two questions coming out of there. Alrighty, moving along. Casin and whey protein. Know those two major categories of milk protein. So if there are two major categories of milk protein, then you need to know them. Uh, so this is a good instance, uh, to get this whole paragraph here. Know about casin and whey protein. And again, you got this little chart over to the right. Casein proteins and whey proteins. So know that. Because they will get, this is where the scientific part comes in. Like talking about proteins, talking about casein, talking about whey, this is the scientific aspect of this test. Alright, moving along now to page ill Evan. I found it more helpful to focus here on the milk protein physical properties. So again, talking about the casins, this is, just relies everything else a bit. Uh, and all of this, if you want to know, there is a video, I keep directing you guys to my, my YouTube page. Uh, but, uh, Zoe Brickley from Jasper Hill Farms, uh, made three videos with me, uh, two years ago. Uh, and I've kept them because they're extremely helpful, but she goes into explaining a lot of this as well. And she's great at explaining scientific things, uh, in layman's terms. So if you want good backup to this information, just check out the videos that are there for you. Uh, so other than that, whey proteins, this, any of these little boxes, guys, any of these little boxes are amazing way to pick out what could be on the test. The whey proteins exist as individual units dissolved in the water phase of the milk. And then of course, oh, the big one I wanted here. The predominant cause of protein degradation is through en- through enzymes called, uh, proteasis. So that's something you need to know. I would highlight that section. Get to know that. Awesome. Continuing on now to page twelve. Alrighty. Denaturization, I got that right here. So that causes a change in the physical structure of the proteins. I would know that. And here, the milk breakdown. I would know a little bit about this. They're not gonna, you may get asked one question that goes really deep into the minerals of milk. So the, but what I always, what I circled here, riboflavin. After the test, that word just sticks out more in my mind, if that makes sense. So I would know more about that. But know what, know what milk is made of, know what the minerals are. I believe I would know the percentages, right? So we got a good graph here. Milk contains small amounts of copper, iron, magnesium, uh, and sodium, and is not considered a major source of minerals of the diet. That's not as important, but I would know riboflavin. I've got it late, I've got it circled again. So I would know that. And then of course, big term which you should already have written down from your glossary, calcium phosphate. You're gonna get asked one question about calcium phosphate. Next up in our reading. Having such a good time today, was I, to see everybody, uh, but enzymes. Oh, Lord have mercy. Of course, we want to know about enzymes. I would know about their pH and temperature, specifically, because you're gonna have it here. You're gonna have, uh, lipases are enzymes that, uh, degrade fat versus proteases, which are enzymes that degrade protein. So know those. I would know the difference between these two for sure. And then of course, this little box, which we just said in that first sentence. Alrighty. And other than that, like this is big stuff, but I've got the very last bit of this page. Beyond the stage of milk production, microbial contamination can generally occur from what sources? Uh, this is a question on your test. This, so the bottom of page, what I have is thirteen, uh, under dairy microbiology. Uh, I would know, I would know where contamination could come, uh, generally occur from these three main sources. So from within the udder, from the exterior of the other udder, and from the surface of milk handling and storage equipment. That is huge. That is a question. You will get asked that. So absolutely understand that. Now how they ask it, it could be a different terminology, they could throw a trick at you. But again, pointing out, since this is so, since contamination of milk is of utter importance to the entire industry, you have a much higher likelihood that that's gonna be on there, and I'm pretty sure it will. Uh, but you need to know, uh, you know, what happens within the udder. So within the udder, uh, there is, uh, you know, you can't get an infection. Uh, I would know what that infection is, mastitis. I would know about mastitis. I pointed that out in the first training. You absolutely would get asked about that. From the exterior of the udder. Here, like, let's take this even deeper. What could get on the udder that would pass this along? And if you're looking at things like, you know, where, where does the udder go? It could drag along in the mud. Uh, so any other outside contaminant, it could get feces on the udder. So think about the physical things, it could get on the udder to carry along bacteria, and you're really talking about soil, water, and feces. Um, hate to say that, it sounds gross, but that's just the way it is. Um, and of course, from the milk service handling, storage equipment, that's not cleaned appropriately. Excellent. Lot of good stuff on that page, huh? Moving along to the next page. Oh, my goodness, I already said it. It's on this page. On my page fourteen, mastitis. That again, there may be two to three questions about this. That is so important to the cheese industry, to every udder of every animal could get mastitis. Uh, and what to know is, you do not, you cannot use the milk uh, from an animal with mastitis, because you will contaminate the milk. Um, but what happens at that stage is that's where antibiotics come in, everybody. So say if a mama cow gets mastitis, she's sick, she has an infection. At that point, they pull her from the herd, they separate her from the rest. She still has to be milked. Because milk is still getting there, so milk still has to come out, or, or it's gonna hurt her. So they still, so they give her antibiotics and they milk, but that milk does not go into any liquid milk drinking. It's just discarded, right? And then, once that cow is healthy, and all the antibiotics have run through the system and are no longer there, then that animal is put back with the rest of the herd. You know, we don't want to use antibiotic milk, but we still want to be able to give antibiotics to our animals, because if we didn't, they would die. Right? So we want to keep our animals healthy, but we don't use that milk. But remember mastitis, uh, and how it is, how it is obtained. You will get asked about that. Alrighty. I would know about our, our, uh, our bacteria here. Absolutely want to know about those guys. And now we're gonna get into pathogens. Okay, so now I'm on page fourteen, looking at pathogens. I'm gonna look very sternly into the camera here. Know these pathogens. These are on your test. Um, you can do this. You know, those of us who've been in the industry long enough, we know the words, we know the names. Where they do get specific with you, and I'm gonna tell you this, they're gonna get specific. It's like, which, where, where do you get each one? You know, is it a bacterial infection? I would know what symptoms, like they even ask what symptoms from each of them. So, and I believe it's the Good Cheesemaking Hub, uh, uh, on, that is, the materials that's on the ACS website. On there, they give a little chart, absolutely memorize that. But all of these, you will get asked a couple of questions about each. Food safety is paramount in this industry. Therefore, the questions on this part of the test will be more. And they're gonna get specific. You don't have, like, they don't, it's not just, oh, the general knowledge of cheese. No, this is the specifics about these pathogens. So get them. So if you see these four, you absolutely have to know them inside and out. And as we go along, I just want to give you the example here. Uh, so of course, you're gonna have Salmonella, Listeria, Campylobacter, and E. coli. Those are the big ones. And they're a pathogen. Know that they're a pathogen. So now, it just kind of goes into a little bit deeper about each one. Um, and I'm gonna read through one, just to kind of get you the highlights again of what you need to focus on, and where you need to make your notes. So Listeria, uh, is found in the soil and water and has been isolated from large number of environmental sources. Uh, it's destroyed by Uh, it's destroyed by pasteurization. Boom, that's your note. That's how you get rid of Listeria, pasteurization. So make a note about that. But if food products are contaminated after pasteurization, Listeria can grow at refrigerator temperature. Boom, know those temperatures. So know that it can be killed by pasteurization, but also know that it can grow in cold temperatures. Illness can occur from sporadic events or larger outbreaks. Uh, Listeria causes illness. Know this, this, this goes into your notes. Causes illness in pregnant adults, newborns and elderly. Uh, the elderly and patients with compromised immune systems. But healthy adults and children may also become infected. So know that it's, it's typically caused in pregnancy, pregnant, newborns, elderly or, or health compromised. Symptoms include flu-like symptoms, fever, muscle aches, stiff neck, headache. Septumasia, uh, meningitis, miscarriage, stillbirth, oh my God, premature delivery, abortion or death. As horrible as all those things are to remember, like that needs to go on your study card. Like what are the symptoms of Listeria? Boom, those are they. Because you could get asked a question and how it would be phrased is, um, looking at the symptoms of, and they list everything out, what would you say is the pathogen that caused this illness? So you would have to match, basically be able to match a pathogen to the illness that is given, to the symptoms. Alrighty, so here, again, you got symptoms, the cause, the prevention and the incubation. This is where I would tell you to get as detailed as possible. Um, I probably missed a question or two on here because the thing is with these scientific words, sometimes they can blend in and sometimes they can, uh, the symptoms can blend in. Now, they don't change the symptoms to, to fool you. You know, that's not where they're going with this, is to, to give you weird, you know, to kind of play with the symptoms a little bit. They're gonna give you the actual symptoms and for you to list, but they're not gonna try to trick you. They just want to know, do you know the actual facts? Alrighty. So then just keep going. So we get like, all this information is here for you. It's up for you to read and to make your notes on to the study. But keep going. I would know all of these. Here's the enda. A little bit less, but again, I would know about it. Uh, Campylobacter, absolutely a hundred percent, put stars around that one. You need to know it. Bactylistis. It's there, know it, but not quite as important. Uh, because you're gonna get to E. coli here. A little bit, let's skip down to E. coli. The rest of them, read over, no. But the big four, right? So the next one is of course, coming down on page seventeen. E. coli, boom, that's your big one too. Rest of them again, no, read about. But E. coli, know everything you can about it. Study it hard. Hundred percent on your test. And of course, as we keep going down, the next page, uh, Salmonella is on my page eighteen. Know about Salmonella. It's huge. We know about recalls, which leads into, it's not on this page right now, but recalls. This is in your good, uh, your, 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 your cheesemaking book, uh, or study guide on the web, on the ACS website, uh, good hub for cheesemaking. They're gonna talk more about, uh, recalls on that, but the thing is, you gotta know what Salmonella is. But what happens once an outbreak is identified? Who can identify an outbreak? Who can tell people to recall, uh, an item and how do recalls actually work? So in that, I would reference, I would know these and then go back to the Good Cheesemaking Hub from the ACS website and review recalls. Because you will get asked, I would say. I'd say good five, a good five to seven questions about recalls, because again, that affects us all. Again, that affects each and every one of us, no whether if I'm in education or cheesemonger or a buyer or distributor or even a broker. Everybody has to know about those because they're utmost important. Okay? Moving right along. Uh, so we know Salmonella hugely important, know about. I kind of want to say my, my normal, know it, love it, live it, but that seems inappropriate during all this. Uh, now going back on page nineteen to, uh, of course. Uh, Staphylococcus, know what a staph infection is. Know about that. And here's another graph, as far as to tell you, the organism, the disease, the symptoms and the source. So that's a good mindset. If you can know that about each one of these, then you're gonna be doing really, really well. Alrighty. Moving along after this, bacteria chloroforms. And you know the definition, that should be something you probably have already studied. Uh, then psychotropic bacteria. Psychotropic bacteria are not a specific type or family of bacteria, but rather this is the name given to bacteria that are capable of growing at forty-four point six degrees or less. So this is basically, you're gonna need to know the bacteria that can, that can grow when it's cold. And there's some bacteria that grow better when it's hot. Know the difference between those. Psychotropic cold, they can grow when it's cold. And know that, um, this group of microbes is a concern in dairy products because they grow at refrigerator temperature. We talked about refrigerator temperature. So we just listed, this is refrigerator temperature. So if you had an issue, again, this is why you're reading, sometimes I mean, it's a culmination of a lot of knowledge. Hopefully you're putting these puzzle pieces together, because that's what some of this studying requires. Um, so it, and calls spoilage, often resulting in off flavors. The most common, uh, psychotrophics uh, are in the genus pseudomonas, excuse me, these organisms are killed by pasteurization. We mentioned that before. So the ones that grow in cold can be killed by pasteurization. I would know that. Alright. Moving along, the next few minutes we have with you. Now we're talking about animals. Alright, so effects of species breeding composition on cheese. This is something that really delves down into the fact of like, you know, you will get asked, like what is a ruminant? Like this is, you know. Hopefully, again, you should have a good basis for this already. But it's important for us to know about ruminants. Why? Because that's where our milk comes from. So if our milk comes from ruminants, it's important that you know this, that we, we get our milk from animals with four-chambered stomachs. Um, know that. So dairy production systems in the US, uh, milk comes from breeds of cattle generally selected for milk production. At one time in the US, cattle were selected simultaneously for beef and milk production. Uh, this is still the case in many parts of the world. The common dairy breeds in the US have been selected almost exclusively for milk production uh, for many generations. That's a statement. As I'm reading that, I'm like, that's probably not the most important stuff in the world. We know that cows are picked for dairy. In the United States, we really breed them for that, but we keep beef and dairy cows separate. You know, we do, we will have, of course, uh, baby boy cows that are born in the dairy world. They're shipped off to become meat. Uh, we do know that, but that's not something to really worry about on your test. That's not the biggest deal in the world. Uh, but what is, is knowing what a ruminant is. Knowing what their diet is. And knowing that it involves fermentation, regurgitation and digestion. Um, the big thing. The fourth stomach. Appalmasum, I would know that. I think I said that right. I would know what, yeah, what the fourth stomach is. Uh, and three categories of ruminants, ruminants distinguished by diet. So this is where we get into our animals. Then of course, we talk about cow, sheep, goat. What to remember about, about the animals is, uh, as we're winding down a little bit on time. Know about their gestation cycle. When do, when do they normally mate? And how long do they gestate for? And then their lactation cycles. The number one thing to remember out of all these animal types, I think is more so the lactation cycle. When do they start lactating and when do they end? For a cow, it's most of the year. For a sheep, it's a much shorter time of the year. So when do they start lactating and when do they end lactating? Uh, so know that for cow, goat and sheep, you will get asked a little bit about that. Uh, of course, with goat milk. Know that it is, it is a, uh, that milk is stark white. Why? Because the goats cannot process the keratin. And the grass, that's something to know. Let's see here. So read all about these animals. Um, there's not a thousand questions on the animals. Don't, don't fret too much. But it is good to know. You need to, you need to know when, you know, when goats have babies, how long do they give milk? Because that affects the milk, right? That, that, that affects us obtaining milk. Alright, moving on down to breed of animal and impact on milk composition. I would read through this, um, words that I got out of here, which definitely you needed to get, hopefully you can see me highlighting it here, uh, colostrum. Absolutely know about colostrum. That's the first milking, uh, for the, that, that milk always goes to the calf. That milk has much more bacteria, the things that that baby, baby animal needs to line its stomach to become healthy. Uh, but clo- but humans, we do not drink that. I want that's important. That's at least one question about that. Then as we keep going down, you see mastitis again, absolutely important. Let's keep moving along. Ah, here we go. Lactation and compensation, uh, composition of cheesemaking animals' milk. Here you go. Average yields. This is in kilograms. As in most of the scientific world will be in. But here you can also look at fat, protein, lactose, minerals, water. So this is where too, this is a great chart, the chemical composition of cheesemaking in animals. Um, cause this also tells you the ingredients and mill. Besides, besides just knowing, like, yeah, that's a lot of specific things to know. But the main thing I'm getting out of here too is milk is made up of fat, protein, lactose, minerals and water. That's another takeaway you can get from here. And I think that's super important. Who has the most water? Uh, who has the most fat? You see, you're looking through here, sheep milk. Goat has just a little bit less cow fat. Sheep milk is high and of course, water buffalo extremely high. So that's, that's one of the charts I was talking about. Definitely know that. Really will help you out on the test. Let's see. Animal weight. You're not gonna get asked a lot about animal weight. You just need to know that for your, you know, cows are big, twelve hundred pounds. Buffalos are bigger, closer to fourteen hundred pounds. And goat and sheep way less than, like a sheep make it up to two hundred pounds, old, little fat lady. Uh, but goats aren't gonna be that big. Alright, and here's a good little, uh, milk production per year. That's a great little graph to know too. A cow can give close to eighteen thousand, uh, pounds. No, that's pounds, not gallons. Uh, goat, right at two thousand pounds a year. Uh, sheep. She don't give that much. They don't give that much. Know these charts. That's gonna help you out. Nice little, nice little cheat sheet for you. Alright, and then coming down to the bottom of page twenty-two on my sheet here, uh, rumen function. Uh, absolutely know about these. I got that highlighted. And now going down. I'm looking at feeding management. Body condition. You're not gonna get asked a lot about body condition. This is too much information. So now this is what I mean that, uh, like I would know what cows eat. I would know grass versus silage. What is silage? Um, that's like what, what animals eat affects the milk. So know about that. The body conditions, you're not gonna get given a graph and have to pick out the body conditions of animals. That's not, not gonna happen. Energy effects, protein effects. Concentrated intake. I wouldn't worry so much about that. I'm gonna keep moving on to twenty-four. Background of dairy and production in the US. Uh, you absolutely need to know who Louis Pasteur was. And what did Louis Pasteur come up with? Of course, pasteurization. Pasterization affects all of us. So know about it. And even with pasteurization, get even deeper, which there's gonna be more graphs later on, but know the temperature, you know, that this is high, high, uh, high heat, short time. Know those acronyms and know the specific temperatures for pasteurization. You will get asked that. Alrighty. Plus, this is good information to know. Life cycle production phases. So now I'm going down, going to twenty-five. And at the bottom of this page. I put a star. So page twenty-five in here. This is all important, especially stages of lactation. What did I mention earlier? You need to know that. Here's your information. Stages of lactation, dairy cows are listed having three hundred, at three hundred and five day lactation. Know it. Write that down. That's a question. You're gonna get asked that. And that's what I mean by knowing the lactation days, learning for sheep and for goats as well. But everything about this going down from life, again. Looking at this life cycle production phases, all the way down through that on page twenty-five. Very important. I would definitely know those. Alrighty. And then of course, it goes down on page twenty-six. Natural weeding, drying off dairy animals. Drying off sheep. Drying off goats. They don't, I, I didn't recall a lot about drying off animals. Like that's not the biggest thing on there. It'd be great to read so you can know, but I don't recall a lot about drying off, so not the, not the biggest thing to study. Um, now we're coming down to page twenty-seven. And it talks about dairy cattle. And here, over the next few, uh, pages, you're gonna see breeds. This is good stuff to, to realize. So the first breed, let's just cover it before we let you go. Brown Swiss. Large brown cattle that are known for their docile manner, high milk protein uh, to milk fat ratio. Sound feet and legs and, uh, purported resistance to heat stress in hot and humid regions. Brown Swiss is a breed of dairy cattle that produces the second largest quantity of milk, uh, per annum. And the milk contains an average of four percent, but, so this is kind of specific, but know that. Like knowing that, like, especially if the breed ones more docile, like a lot of people use Brown Swiss. Why? You know, and I don't think he, they're not gonna ask a lot of questions of like, which American cheesemakers uses Brown Swiss cows? That's not the point of the test. So don't freak out on that. But I would know about Brown Swiss. What makes those ladies so special? And, uh, you know, really, really that just first paragraph is probably the most important there. So go ahead and look that up. The next one, of course, is Jersey. You know, you need to know what a Jersey cow is. So I'd make a note about those. Holstein. On the next page, each of these cows seem to get a whole page. Read about those, but again, focus on the small amount of information on them. Uh, Guernsey. Next. Dutch belted. I don't remember much about Dutch belted. But, or milking shorthorn, I don't remember much about, but this is great information about each cow. Ashire, I remember things, but so like Brown Swiss, Holstein, Ashire, more get asked about those. If they, you know, if there's anything, and it's more often than not, again, gonna be basically the first paragraph. They're not gonna get so technical with you on that. Alrighty, and with that, we have reached our two thirty cutoff time. Uh, I hope today was very helpful for you. Again, I'm here to guide you to this, to the least amount of information to help you study. And I think I gave you a good leg up today on what to focus on. Our next training, we're gonna pick up, I'm making a note in my book, and we're gonna pick up right where we are right here. Uh, when we move on to our next training. So if you have any questions, please feel free to always reach out to me. Uh, nauldridge at GFI foods dot com. Uh, I'm always here to help you and, uh, have a happy, safe study time.